Okay. I would like to call the August 4, 2025 City Council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If you all rise for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we are online with Counselor Holmes and Counselor Santiago. Counselor Miller is excused absence, may join us possibly, and other three are in person. You've had a chance to look at tonight's agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Jacob.
I so move to approve the agenda as written.
Motion to approve the agenda as written, any seconds?
Second.
Second by Counselor Haugen, any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Public comment, this is a place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to council regarding any matter not on the agenda and not scheduled for a public hearing. Members of the public addressing council are requested to give their name and city of residence. Please try not to repeat questions to allow for more speakers. Speakers are to limit their testimony to five minutes, or we are limited to 30 minutes total for all public comment, and I will try to work a timer for you. Okay, we'll start with Stu Butler. If I could come up to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Stu Butler, and I live up on Keys Road. This is dealing with the new housing development and the vibrations. So I had asked questions about the, were the road transitions from one to another old pavement, new pavement, and I was sent to Columbia County, and they basically said they didn't have anything to do with it because of the water treatment plant and the new housing development, and they said everything needed to come back through the city. My question was, you know, a lot of the vibrations in front of my house, like even a school bus goes over the road one direction, my windows shake in my house. And this isn't because of my foundation, I had a company come look at that, but if they could just do something to do with the transition to make it smoother, like all these big trucks, I mean, if they'd slow down, there's no vibrations. But if the road was smooth, I would never know. So someone could look at that and maybe push forward on that, I don't know, because the county was not interested in it at all, they just like nah.
Stu, can you tell me exactly whereabouts that would be? What part of this?
There's two spots, right in front of the water treatment plant, like when they put the new water treatment, this is years ago, there's one there where the Hugheser Lane comes down, so there's one there, then one down the road, maybe 100 feet from my house, there's another, just old pavement, black pavement, you know, maybe something, because I tried to ask, are they going to redo the pavement, and that this is all going to go away anyway? I couldn't get an answer. So Columbia County didn't have any idea what was going on. And the other thing is, is that with all the vibrations and stuff, been online, looking at different stuff, there's supposed to be vibrations tests done, it sounds like, and we're getting so much vibrations, has anybody done any vibration tests? Anybody? That's supposed to be done, somehow the city's supposed to, or the municipality is supposed to come up with stuff like that.
We can look into and see, I mean, there are permits and see who oversees those permits and who is in charge of vibration testing.
Yeah, because I've been talking to one person, there was, there was a clay level, and it's not normal, like when Rick Waterston did his housing development, I had no issues. And we had people at our house all the time, you know, I mean, like my wife and me were always there, so we knew if there was any vibrations or not. No issues there at all, I mean, he was right beside our house, on a football field's length away, our house, it's daily, it just rattles, my girls come down, but dad, the outside's still shaking. So there's something different with the lay of the land, and why can't, they say, okay, we've got something going on, not normal, can we relook at this, instead of just keeping, forcing forward with it all the time?
All right. Okay.
Okay, I, I, quick follow-up questions. Stu, thanks for, thank you for vocalizing your, your concerns. I, I walked up there today, and I just happened to time it with a, with a big heavy truck, with a load of up, that was moving along the road past me, but it was going really slow, and I was, I was looking, feeling, trying to feel for vibrations, and I didn't feel anything, so maybe one of the solutions is we can, we can reduce the speed limit there to, or have a posted speed limit, construction speed limit or something, just five miles an hour, whatever. That might mitigate, mitigate a lot of the problem and be proactive in solving, in solving this.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Columbia County about that, because I was told that they're in charge of it, and they said it would take up to two years to do something like that.
Not, not Keys Road, Keys Road is a city street.
Oh, okay.
We'd have to check, is it?
Yeah, Keys is a city, city street.
County, right? Um, can I jump in here real quick?
Yes, if you.
So Keys Road is a county road?
Keys Road, Keys Road's a county road?
Yeah. All of it.
Whoa.
And so, as a part of that project, and we, we coordinated with the county early on with regard to Hugheser and with our reservoir project, because we knew it was going to get beat up pretty good for, for both of those, and, you know, we're, we're going to, we're going to take a look at it after construction of the reservoir in Hugheser, and we'll drag the county up there and, and we'll do whatever we need to, to get the road back in shape, but there may be some, may take some time to get, you know, that in the county budget. One of the things we did talk about was the bump that you mentioned there.
Thanks.
And it's a part of an overlay that was done as a part of the reservoir project, the 2 million gallon reservoir project that was done, I don't know when that was done. Yeah, early 2000s, I believe, and so, we, part of it on the, the southbound lane will be addressed when we tie the storm in, or when the developer ties the storm in on Hugheser, it'll be running down that lane, which is really what's causing that issue, and that'll be repaved as a part of that, that storm line tie-in portion of the work, and then on the northbound side, we're working with the county and our own public works folks to see if we can, you know, partner with them to do the other half from that point forward, north rather, just past the project boundary, at least through the intersection with Keys Land.
But, but if, if that is indeed a county road, then the county should be compliant with a request to reduce or have a construction speed limit, would, would they not?
They could probably post something up there temporarily, I'd have to check with the chief on that, I don't, I mean, five is pretty, pretty slow, but, I mean, it just depends on whether or not we can do that legally.
Well, yeah, but yeah, the county's are going to be, is going to be a good neighbor on this, so I would think they would be more than happy to do something like that.
It, those get kind of tricky though, because you have speed orders that are ODOT approved speed limits, we can't just arbitrarily set speed limits, so there, you know, by default, all those roads have ODOT speed designations on them.
Well, worth looking into anyway.
Yeah, we'll definitely look into it, I'll talk to the chief about that, I mean, it's a short stretch, and, and it may be possible that we can grind that just temporarily until the, you know, until the proper paving can be done.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll look into that, we'll explore that option, and then our hope obviously is to repave that and so that there's no problem, and that's all, that all looks new. With regard to the vibration testing, we did do testing on the reservoir project as a part of the, the, the stone, the stone columns that were used, because they're rather deep, and they get down to some soft layers, there wasn't anything unusual in that, actually it was quite, quite a bit less than what we all expected. We don't normally require vibration testing on subdivisions, normally because it's not an unusual sort of construction practice, they're just digging ditches and driving their, you know, doing their earthwork type activities, pretty, pretty common. We can certainly talk to them about installing something, but, at the, at the boundary of the site, but probably it would reveal that, you know, maybe there's some, there's vibration happening from that bump on the road.
Yeah, talking to multiple neighbors, their houses are vibrating too.
Yeah.
It's not normal.
Yeah, and I know Ben, we've been in touch, we've been working almost daily with the developer and trying to communicate, go over all the options, what's going on, I know they've been in contact, but we'll keep you guys updated anytime we've got anything good, don't hesitate to reach out.
Okay, one question, it may not be, the, the city of Portland came out here and had a bunch of rigs out there, where they're doing a, putting the piping in the ground?
The city of Portland?
Yeah, there was like a city of Portland rig out there, and that's when they're having problems with the water coming up out of the ground, building the hole in, and they had.
What are we talking about?
The new housing development.
Well, this, I don't think the city of Portland would have had any involvement in that, maybe it was a company from the.
Right, it's about city of Portland or something like that, oh, that's interesting, because there were water and they're pumping the water out of a.
Oh, it could be that there, was that today?
Almost like last week or two weeks ago.
I mean, they might have hired a pumping service on a portion of it, because I know they were de-watering, they're, they continue to de-water for the detention facility, and then this week they were, they had to pull a piece of detention pipe out, so they're probably de-watering for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I suspect it was a private company.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate that.
James Meyer. Welcome back.
Thank you. Evening, everybody, thank you for your time again, this is James Meyer, live upon 52259 Southwest Keys Road, directly southeast and adjacent to the Hugheser project entry. I just want to, a couple of quick issues, is, is very unfortunate in this day and age that a man lives his life, tries to live it well, and struggles for over a year with personal meetings, emails, phone calls, pleads for help, and is ignored and dismissed until he has to gather the neighbors from the neighborhood, go around and say, hey, neighbors, are you experiencing this too? We all need to get together because nobody wants to listen. That's very unfortunate in this day and age, and I'm ashamed of the people that I've talked to that work for the city of Scappus. They work for me, they work for everybody behind me, they work for the city, the residents of Scappus, they don't work for anybody else outside of Scappus, nobody, residents of Scappus. It's shameful that that's what it took to get somebody to listen. On the flip side of that, four of us came down, out of the many, there are more that are experiencing damage to their house. Four of those households came down a couple of weeks ago and expressed their concerns, and you guys finally listened. I want to say thank you very much to those of, those of you that listened, and actually stepped up and made a phone call and said, hey, we got a problem over here, you guys better take care of it. So that is very, very much appreciated and recognized, that plight is not over yet, we're not done, because this is ongoing, but I do want to say thank you for the follow-up, for those of you who have done that, very much. There is also, everybody's complaining about the dust, I want to let you know, thank you for the follow-up on that, they have done better about the dust, they have been out, they're actually out there, instead of maybe once every two or three days, they've been out there two, three times a day, so it's noticed, it's appreciated, thank you.
James?
Yes, sir.
A, as a frame of reference for us, can, can you document emails that were sent, where you didn't.
Yes, I can, yeah.
That, that might be useful, if you can dump those out and send them to the city manager to see, see where, where, where the glitch is, because, you know, our, our staff are very, very professional.
The glitch was, you're going to have to talk to the contractor about this, not our issue.
But yeah.
That was the basic response.
But if you can dump out the emails and see what, 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 what wrong here, because you want to correct, if somebody went wrong, you want to correct it.
I appreciate that, I, I can do that. One other thing on the water project is, I can feel when they're doing like the pile driving or compacting, I can actually feel that small amount of vibration, just a very small amount of vibration, but I can tell you unequivocally that the damage to my house and the vibrations and the seismic activity at my house are in no way caused by anything going down at the water plant. I can document that with proof, and when it comes time, that will happen. Any questions from anybody?
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do you have any more, anybody online, more comments? Okay, we will close public comment for tonight and move on to consent agenda, which tonight we're looking at July 2020, or July 21, 2025 City Council work session minutes and July 21, 2025 City Council meeting minutes, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
The vote.
Counselor Haugen makes a motion to approve, any seconds?
Second.
Counselor Jacobs, the second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, tonight we have the oath of office. Have paper here, Shane Davis, can you come on down? You're the next contestant. Scappus, please. Come on up here, front and center.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, if you can repeat after me. I, Shane Davis.
I, Shane Davis.
Hereby swear on my oath.
I swear on my oath.
To honestly and faithfully.
Honestly and faithfully.
Discharge my duties of police officer.
Discharge my duties of police officer.
For the city of Scappus.
For the city of Scappus.
And that I will support the laws.
And I will support the laws.
The constitution of the state of Oregon.
The constitution of the state of Oregon.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Scappus.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Scappus.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Anybody want to say anything? This is your moment.
Well, hey, guys, Shane Davis. Been, just moved in here three years ago, really love the city, I came from military, eight years Marine Corps, and I really fell in love with this city, it's a little piece of home, if you don't know me, I'm from Georgia, so a little out of my comfort zone as far as like the Pacific Northwest is new to me, but, you know, Scappus has really reminded me of a little bit of Georgia, and I really liked it here, and I didn't really want to leave the military, so came out here, loved the community so much that I just really wanted to be a part of it, and decided to become a police officer, so that's my little short story, and I hope to spend the next 20 to 25 years with this uniform on, I know it's pretty, I'm new, so it's easy for me to say that, but I really do see myself here for a very long time, I do really enjoy it here, and it's, it's made it even easier with everyone back there in the uniform, they've been so welcoming of me, and I really appreciate it, so thanks, guys, and I'm really excited to get started, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Want to go ahead and put that on?
First one to take us up on talking. Get a kid picture with the kids, come on. Okay, thanks again, on to new business, time of year again, we're going to get an update on the Scappus Outdoor Fun Festival and everything else, J.J. Durn world, come on down. We've been requested by a couple counselors to get an update, what do you think, how it went, thoughts going forward?
All right, well, I do a number of events at the city of Scappus on a volunteer basis, working with the Scappus library and, and obviously community partners here. The outdoor festival went really well, it's a really long day for all of us, I get up at 5:00 and get coffee and all the stuff for the volunteers that are helping us put it together, we had a lot of really fun exhibits, I actually got a chainsaw artist to come, we had, we're, we've brought back the Scappus sauerkraut sandwich, we have the Oregon Equestrians with their setup, we brought pictures that we can pass around so that you can see that we're legit.
Not superimposed.
And, and really some great talent, we had live music all day, and I was exhausted at the end of it, but it turned out really well. We did miss having the Scappus Fire Department this year, they just, they were doing their own event, basically doing a mock-up of, of going into a house and doing a rescue, so they weren't able to make it, although they'll be coming to one of our movie nights, but yeah, so I thought it went really well, we had 300 swag bags with gifts that we gave out to families, we had, like I said, really great music, and, you know, we're doing well, and we're heading into movie night, and then obviously we did Earth Day beforehand, so I volunteer a tremendous amount of time to do this, but, I mean, people love it, and for me, you know, I think it's just really important to give back to the community in what, what we can, and also to be able to provide free and, and really low-cost activities for families. Everything is so expensive now, I mean, food is expensive, you know, a family of five is probably going to spend $150 to $200 to go out and eat and go do something, and so, you know, we make sure that, we give away a lot of fun stuff, and we also make sure that, like for our movie nights, that just about everything is a dollar, hot dogs, cheeseburgers, drinks, everything else, and, you know, we couldn't do it without some of our community partners, we'd like to thank our fabulous Chief Chris, who is always there with his crew, and they've just been great to, with movie night, they actually came up with Beetlejuice bags for the kids this time, and also with NJ, he really helped a great deal with the outdoor festival, and he was our poet laureate for Campfire Storytelling Booth, but yeah, it's, it's really a lot of fun to do, and it's, you know, I, I think it really, it's very impactful for the community, so, you know, and we just finished, so basically we do seven events for the, the Scappus community every year, and it's a lot of work, but I think we do a good job.
I, I agree, I think you guys do great, it's great to spread these out and have events throughout the year. One thing I just thought of, and I know they kind of do it at Whoville, is it'd be cool to have some kind of a map to see where people are coming from, get an idea, because we, they come from outside of the county and the city, and it'd be nice to see our reach.
Yeah.
That's one thing that just popped into my head, but.
Well, and, and we also, so the other side of it is, is that we've also been getting some great press in Portland, for Earth Day, they did a big story about the food drive that we did, you know, once again, it's us, it's not merely just providing entertainment, but it's trying to make a, an impactful chant, you know, change in the community, and the food bank had cut out all non-perishable food that the library is giving out every Wednesday, so we partnered with Fox Television in Portland, and they came out and did a great story about it, we got a ton of food that they were able to help families with, you know, and we've seen a real uptick in people going and getting food assistance, because, you know, either they've lost their jobs, or, you know, food prices are just so extraordinarily high right now, people are really struggling. The other thing that has been a side benefit of what we do is by me working, and Jeff too, but, but by myself going out and partnering with different local businesses, we've been able to really reinvigorate the community club's finances, so we're into our eighth year of doing movie night, and we've been doing, what, the hot dogs for, what, four years now?
Yes.
Yeah, four years, four glorious years, and it was, it was really funny, for this past Friday, I mean, we had people there at 6:00, so it was like, they wanted their hot dogs and their cheeseburgers, but basically, we're able to get that donated from the grocery outlet, and then we let the community club sell them for a dollar apiece, and so that goes on for seven weeks, and we also, was also able to assist in getting them supplies for their Scappus sauerkraut sandwich, so, you know, and, and membership in that group has gone up, so, I mean, not only do we benefit people that come and experience these movies, but I think, I think we're a benefit for the Scappus Police Department, getting them out there in the public, showing everybody just how fantastic they are, and also just giving people a sense of, of fun purpose, you know, people love movie night, you know, they love these things because they know that it's going to be fun, they're going to, we have a bunch of free stuff, we gave away, what, two kayaks, three kayaks, no, we gave away three kayaks for the outdoor festival, we gave away another electric bike for the Earth Day celebration, and we'll be doing Pizza Bingo with Fattano's pizza certificates starting next week, but yeah, so I'm happy to continue doing it, it's, it's a lot of work, but I'm good at it, so there you go.
And the time was a good time of the year, I mean, end of May, I mean, we've been getting good weather.
Absolutely, yes, well, and I mean, for, for the outdoor festival, I mean, obviously the way we do Earth Day is we do it the Saturday closest to the actual Earth Day itself, for the outdoor festival, what we try to do is set it up to where it is before school and graduation happens, so, you know, it gives people a chance to look at, you know, different ways to enjoy the outdoors, we've got some businesses that also focus on that, I mean, it's disappointing that we lost, you know, next adventure, but, but, you know, I think that Scappus really is the, the gateway to the outdoors, because Highway 30 is very heavily traveled for people that are coming to go to the coast, and the way I, the reason I know that is we had to do highway studies when I was working on the marketing with Joel and other folks for our sidewalk funding that passed, so we have a tremendous amount of traffic that comes up Highway 30 when they head out to the coast, and then they zip back on Highway 26, because there's lots of fun things to do along Highway 30, I mean, you know, you've got the, the Crowns Ellaback Trail, you've got Berry Patch up in, in the Clatscanai area, you've just got all these little things that you can, Prescott Beach, I mean, there's just a lot of fun things, and, you know, we need to, to capitalize that and promote that.
Great, well, we really appreciate all your help, I mean, Counselor Santiago, before I miss you, do you have a question?
I do, I just, first I want to thank you, J.J. and Jeff, and all of the, the volunteers that have put on these events, thank you so much, I know it takes a lot of time and effort, and, and we appreciate it. You mentioned the count of bags that you passed out, but are you guys keeping track of the people that are attending like Earth Day, Adventure Fest, and movies in the park?
So we're estimating that it's right around 1,000 for Earth Day and for the outdoor festival, and we, we don't really, I, we don't really keep track, we just, you know, fill up the area, I mean, I'm, I'm volunteering my time, so I don't have time to, and, and there's a lot of planning that goes into doing it and doing it well, so I, I don't think, for, for me anyway, it's really just not my focus to do that, it's my focus to put on really great events for the community at no charge.
Yeah, I just think it's sometimes when you, organizations are going after grants, just giving numbers and data, sometimes it, it helps, but.
No, I appreciate that, I think, you know, I mean, by, by having the swag bags given out, one per family, so we have 300 of those that we do for Earth Day as well as the outdoor festival, and then we also get a ridiculous amount of entries for the kayak giveaways and the electric bike gives, giveaways, but I think that's, I think that's sage advice, I mean, we could certainly go through and have someone count those, it's just not going to be me.
We also have the ability to track how many hamburger, hot dogs you sell, or.
We, we pretty much sell out, I mean, it's, it's, because what do we get, how many, what, 300 hamburgers and hot dogs?
Yeah, something like that, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, and so, and, and people always want more, so, and like I said, what, what was really surprising to me is like, this was the first year. this was the first year that people were showing up at 6:00. I get there around 5:00. We go and get, you know, Fred Meyer donates water and snacks for the volunteers. So, I go and do that. And then when we're getting stuff from Means Nursery, which we'll probably do this week, I do that. But, so I get there around 5:30 and people were starting to mull around and I'm like, oh, we're not even like, kind of close. But, but I, you know, it's just, people just really love it and I have a lot of fun goofing off on the kids. And we had one Beetlejuice, one person dress up as Beetlejuice. So, we have these contests, these costume contests, but if the weather's hot, nobody's gonna put on a costume. So, we had Wana as one of our sponsors and they had their eagle, their dressed-up eagles, so kids got to get pictures with that. So, it's just, you know, there's just a lot of interactive fun that people love.
Council Holmes?
Yeah, I also want to thank you, JJ, for all of your efforts on all these events. And I, I love that you aim to bring fun with a greater purpose and mission, which I think you accomplish. For Outdoor Fest, I mean, you are right. This really is the gateway to nature. I actually had a conversation with Ben and I was saying, I got to hike, bike, and paddleboard this weekend and didn't, you know, have to go more than five miles from my house. It truly is a great place to live, if you love the outdoors. I would love to see in future years, if it's possible, can we tie these opportunities that exist in our community to the outdoor event so that we're making people aware of all the opportunities and it brings them back? So, if there's a way to work on that in future years, I'd be happy to, to work with you on that.
I would really like that. I mean, I think, because I, I don't think a lot of people realize how many people utilize Highway 30. You know, I, I used to have a farm out on Southeast Island for many years and would curse the pumpkin patch during Halloween season. But I ride my bike around Southeast Island every week. And last year, in the fall, I was out by the pumpkin patch because I'm friends with the owners and I was getting some food there. And I was listening to people behind me and they were like going, "Oh, we're here at the pumpkin patch and then we're gonna go to Halloween Town." And it's, it's like, you know, there's, there's, there are a lot of destinations in this area that people really love. And I don't think, it's just never discussed, but it's absolutely the truth.
It'd be great if we could sign people up for a bike ride or a kayak and either meet there and then go from there or sign them up to do that.
Well, and also working, you know, I've been working with the Bird Alliance, so, you know, they've been wanting to do more with us as well. I know they've had a number of bird sightings and bird walks along the CZ Trail. And I've been working with them to really get more involved with that as well because they're a great organization.
Great. Well, we'll invite you back here in the next couple of months too, to talk about next year going forward.
JJ, I'd like to echo, we so appreciate what you do.
Thank you, Joel.
The question I have is, what would you recommend for increasing participation in, in the context of what Susan and Joe and I remember as the old Pow Wow and the Sauerkraut Festivals where the numbers, participants were huge?
Right. Well, I think, Joel, the truth is, is that when you start a new event, it takes time to build. So, years ago, what was it, in 2012? I put on the Fourth of July Festival for the City of St. Helens because that's where a lot of my real estate stuff is. And it had a huge turnout, but the reason that turnout was there was because they'd been doing it for decades. So, I think that with, with repeating this and continuing, you can build and grow it. And just, it's, it's really more about also making it, you know, really manageable. And I think we're doing that now, but yeah.
Yeah, we don't want to be a surge of South Dakota, but...
No, no, we do not.
But it would be nice to have the numbers we used to have in the Pow Wow and Sauerkraut Festival. And so, I think looking at that, how we can, what kind of mechanisms we can use to keep...
Yeah, no, I think you're right. I mean, so one of the things that I've done is I've actually reached out to a lot of my media friends and former colleagues in Portland. Fox 12 is planning on doing a story about Movie Night. Scott Tom, who's with 105.9 FM, who is just amazing, he's been promoting events that I do. So, you're right. I mean, I do press releases, so we get a lot of press in our local paper. We do a ton of social media. And it's just about, you know, kind of building the credibility, which we've done and we continue to grow on. And also, you know, inviting more folks to come out.
One of the thoughts might be, if we did resurrect the Pow Wow in concert with the tribes, that, that might be self-fulfilling.
Yeah.
And so, if, I don't know if that'd be you or Ben, but I think having some kind of arrangement where we have, have an opportunity for the tribes to get involved and we...
Well, I've, I've actually reached out to Grand Ronde because we really wanted them to, you know, be a sponsor for the Outdoor Festival. And it's pretty layered. I mean, it takes quite a bit to actually, you know, get that type of a thing going, so.
But yeah, we can continue this conversation.
Yeah, sure. Anything else?
I think that's great. Appreciate it very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Number four, I believe. Outdoor water user. 30754 Dutch Canyon Road application. We've been submitted an application for a connection to municipal water. And so, we're gonna discuss that tonight. So, City Engineer Chris Nagelspaugh is here with the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, item four is, as Joe mentioned, the application for an outside water user request. It's property owned by William Blowton and Lee Posey. And Exhibit A is the application they submitted to connect to our municipal water services at their property at 30754 Dutch Canyon Road, which is outside city limits, but within the eligible service area in accordance with Scappus Municipal Code. This requires a two-thirds majority approval by council. Just as a quick reminder, this came about by some, a lawsuit a number of years ago and resulted in the, the parties that sought the claim against the city, they have outright, outright ability to connect those other properties that were not named in the lawsuit. They're able to come and request service to that line. It happens to run across the front of their properties. These are all on Dutch Canyon Road. The service area map is Exhibit, well, the lawsuit documents Exhibit B and then the service area map is Exhibit C. The brief analysis for this is my evaluation essentially of the feasibility to connect with elevations. Make sure that there's enough pressure to serve the property. In this case, you know, they're down below the line. There's not an issue there. And you'll see that as Exhibit. My recommendations and conditions of approval are listed there as Exhibit B.
Pretty straightforward as others.
Yeah, any questions so far?
We've had a few of these throughout the years, every couple...
Generally get one or two a year. I think, you know, I was trying to look at the numbers today. I just got them from Kathleen and, and I think we're gonna be, we're probably getting close to having everybody on service that's eligible to be on service over there.
If they're above the road, is there a pump involved?
There, there's a pump on that line. And so, the properties that are uphill, if they, if they live high enough, we've never had it be an issue because most of the homes are down by Dutch Canyon. But in the case that they're way up on a property, it might be marginal. But we, we pump that system up to about 130 pounds, so it's, it's quite adequate. And in, and in every case so far that I've seen, people have to put in a pressure-reducing valve essentially, reduce that down to 80 PSI. So, there's no financial impact to the city. There's fees to be paid by the applicant. I listed them out below. We typically don't do that, but I wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of those costs going into it. It's fairly expensive to do this. And then our, you know, our recommendation is, is, is to approve the request and you have a suggested motion?
Nothing outside the normal. Everything was pretty, very straightforward.
And they've, they've been great to work with. And they're here tonight if you have a question. Okay.
I do have a question. So, what, the impact on, on the volume, just domestic use?
Yes.
So, it shouldn't have an appreciable impact on our water supply? Okay. That'd be my only concern?
Yeah, it's quite a large property. That's a great question. But we, all of these lines, when we put the new treated line up Dutch Canyon, we, they, they put wanted service lines on, on that line to every single property. That's, that was either, that was either outright permitted or had to go through this process. So, that they've already, they've already thought through that and they're just a wanted service, which is the typical service you'd see on any domestic property.
So, this is just a check the box?
Yeah. Council Holmes?
Yeah, Chris, you anticipated my first question about how many kind of outstanding potential users remain. So, thank you for addressing that. Is there any kind of scale of efficiency that can be created? Like, if, you know, this is approved, going to any of the surrounding neighbors and offering them kind of an opportunity to do the same? Would that drive down costs at all for anybody?
No, these, the, the ones that are outright permitted, they don't pay any extra costs except for just our basic connection fees. There, it's, it's in our code that there's an extra $1,000 charge for the, the service area applicants just because it, it sort of pays for our time to process these through council and do the analysis. We actually go to the site, look at the infrastructure to make sure it's in place and just what, what things are gonna be needed. So, they do pay a little bit, they pay a higher base rate. Again, it's all baked into our code and that was all determined, you know, years and years, decades ago, essentially.
Thank you.
Yeah, in terms of efficiency, I mean, we're already getting to each property essentially on Dutch Canyon that can be served. They're fairly large parcels, so it's hard to defray that cost over a larger group just because we've got not many...
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
And it requires that they basically shut off the wells that they're on. If they're multi-acre properties, I mean, they can use the water, obviously, to water their lawn. But are they able to irrigate fields and stuff if, through any other means? I mean, the well, can't use the well anymore?
I mean, they generally, all, all of these would have had a well and they're, they're allowed to use that. We just, we just ask it to be physically separated from our system. Because we don't want, we don't want a cross connection issue because those are all pump systems and...
Cool. Okay, any more questions? None? Do I have a motion? First of all, do we have four, six of our, I mean, we need two-thirds of people and we have, we have five, so we need four-fifths? At least four. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, Council Santiago?
I move council approve the request for water connection outside city limits at 30754 Dutch Canyon Road.
Motion by Council Santiago to approve the request for water connection outside city limits at 30754 Dutch Canyon Road. Any second?
Second.
Second by Council Haugen. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Pose? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on. Number five. We have an ordinance, first reading tonight, public hearing and first reading for ordinance 921. An ordinance amending the comprehensive plan map and zoning map, approving Hofstedt self-storage applications for site development review and sensitive lands development permit. We will start with Assistant City Manager, City Planner NJ Johnson with the staff report. Is that right? You want me to do that first?
Yeah.
Tonight, I'm calling the public hearing to order to consider an application for comprehensive plan map amendment, zone change, site development review, and three sensitive land development permits for development activity in the regulated floodplain, wetlands, and fish and riparian corridor overlay. The procedure for this hearing will follow a strict format. Testimony and evidence must address the criteria that apply to the decision as described in the staff report or to the criteria the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Persons may speak only after being recognized by the mayor and must come forward to the microphone and state their name and city for the record. Only testimony that is relevant to the application will be considered. Immaterial or repetitious testimony will not be allowed and time limits will be imposed if testimony is irrelevant or repetitious. The failure to raise and clarify an issue to avoid all part, to afford all parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeal. The council will conduct this hearing in a quasi-judicial capacity. In other words, like a court trial where the council serves as finders of fact. There shall be no audience demonstration or other conduct which would disrupt the hearing. Does any council member wish to declare any ex parte contact or contacts or conflict of interest regarding this matter? Does any party wish to challenge any councilor's impartiality or legal capacity to participate in this matter? Seeing none, the order of the hearing will be the staff report, then the applicant's presentation, the other proponents, then opponents, then rebuttal by the applicant, then a staff response. Thereafter, the hearing will be closed for consideration of the matter by council. Approving this application require the adoption of an ordinance for which we will follow the standard ordinance adoption procedure. We'll start with the staff report, Assistant City Manager, City Planner NJ Johnson.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you all for taking the time to review this application and the staff report. It's what makes the packet so thick tonight, so I really appreciate that. I'm gonna go over the staff report in the way we typically do during a planning commission. As the mayor mentioned, tonight is a quasi-judicial hearing, which means we all must stick to the applicable criteria that we use to make land use decisions. Nothing more, nothing less. As such, my summary of the staff report will focus on specific areas that we are able to review and focus on during the process. I'll begin by going over the subject site information and observations of the staff report. I will then list the approval criteria for the proposed development and let you know which pages of the council packet that those correspond to. And then lastly, I will let you know staff's recommendation, the planning commission's recommendation, and reference the recommended conditions of approval. After that, we will pause in case there are any questions for staff before the applicant's presentation. So, getting into the staff reports, starting with subject site. The subject site is a semi-developed 9.39 acre parcel of land with an existing building, gravel parking lot, paved private road, and landscaping. The building and parking lot is currently used by Oxbow Mega Transport Solutions, which is a heavy transport and rigging service for their office space and equipment storage. Alder Creek runs along the northern edge of the site and South Scappus Creek runs along the eastern edge of the site. The site does not have direct access to a public right-of-way. However, there are a series of existing access and maintenance easement on the subject site and adjacent properties that collectively allow access to these parcels. North of the subject site, moving from west to east, is a vacant parcel and a mostly vacant parcel with two buildings that used to serve as the Oregon Meat Company site back in the day. East of the subject site is Columbia River Highway. However, the subject site has no direct access to it. South of the site, going from west to east, is the Crown Z Trail and the PAD or Pad Heavy Diesel and Commercial Tire. South beyond the Crown Z Trail is Scappus-Fernone Highway, which is the, which the subject site again, has no direct access to. And then finally, west of the subject site is Dan's Autobody. The subject site, one of the parcels to the north, the site to the west, and a portion of the Crown Z Trail are zoned light industrial or LI and are designated as industrial on the comprehensive plan map. The other site to the north, east of the other one I just mentioned, is outside of city limits and is within the urban growth boundary. It's owned by the county as M2, which for them is light industrial. And it's designated on our comprehensive plan map as industrial. The site to the east is outside of city, city limits, within the urban growth boundary, zoned heavy industrial or M1 by the county and designated as industrial on the comprehensive plan map. A portion of the Crown Z Trail and the neighborhood to the south of the site are zoned manufactured housing residential and are designated as MH on the comp plan map. Part of the applicant's proposal includes requests for an amendment to the comprehensive plan map and a zone change of the subject site. Portions of the site are located within the special flood hazard area, which we'll refer to as the floodplain, the 50-foot wetland buffer, and the 50-foot riparian corridor boundary. There are no steep slopes on the site and we'll get more into those sensitive lands in a little bit. Comprehensive plan map, zone amendment and zone change. The subject site is currently zoned... The subject site is currently zoned LI, as I mentioned, and designated as industrial on the comp plan map. The section that governs light industrial zone allows mini storage facilities with or without a caretaker dwelling, but limits the total facility size to three acres. The applicant wishes to develop a mini storage facility that is greater than three acres. And so they are proposing an amendment to the comp plan map that would re-designate the site from industrial to commercial. And then subsequently, a zone change that would amend the zoning from light industrial to expanded commercial. The expanded commercial zoning code does not have any limit on the facility size for storage units. The adopted two thousand eleven Economic Opportunities Analysis, or EOA, indicated a need for two hundred sixty nine gross, which includes rights away, utilities and things like that, acres of industrial land over the twenty ten to twenty thirty planning horizon. The UGB expansion to address this deficit has occurred since then, and the East Airport Annexation was approved in twenty seventeen, which brought in three hundred forty three acres of land zone public use airport and the majority of which has an overlay that allows for compatible light industrial uses. Therefore, the city has a surplus of industrial land. This is supported by the twenty twenty three to twenty forty three EOA. That's part of the fifty year plan is in and is in final draft form. In other words, all the studies have been completed for that. But according to the current EOA, the city has a one hundred and four gross acre deficit of commercial land that has not been addressed by UGB expansion, whereas the industrial one has. Seeing that there is a surplus of industrial land and a deficit of commercial land, the proposed redesignation from industrial to commercial is consistent with the city's desire to balance various types of economic land need. Provided that the map amendment is approved, the commercial designation would support the zone change to expanded commercial. The map amendment and zone change must be approved in order for the site development review to be approved as proposed, since again, they are requesting a facility size larger than three acres. Site development, the applicant is requesting approval of site development review to allow for construction of a mini storage facility with a caretaker dwelling as well as improvements to various site amenities. Assuming approval of the requested CPMA and CC, the proposed design meets all site development requirements related to visual clearance, the expanded commercial zone, sensitive lands, buffering and screening, parking, and utilities as described throughout the entire planning commission staff report. Sensitive lands. The applicant is proposing to establish buildings A, B, and J, asphalt paving, and two stormwater facilities that are partially located within the hundred year floodplain. The applicant is proposing to comply with all required mitigation members for measures for floodplain development, including constructing a storage unit with buildings and methods that are resistant to flood damage, installing underground utilities that are watertight in case of flood damage, anchoring the buildings and elevating structures at least one foot above the base flood elevation, and then maintaining a cut fill balance uh within the floodplain and the site. And that has been applied for the applicant and will be enforced via the recommended conditions of approval. The applicant is proposing the establishment of a stormwater swell and the installation of various utility lines within the fifty foot wetland buffer. The applicant is proposing to establish a sediment fence around the wetlands for erosion protection, and this would take place during construction. Sensitive lands wetlands development permit has been applied for, and the applicant will be subject to all regulations of the Wetland Chapter. And then finally, the applicant is proposing the establishment of stormwater swell within the fifty foot riparian corridor boundary. So this is fifty feet from top of bank of any waterway. The applicant completed an analysis that indicated the stormwater swell occupies only four point four percent of the site's total riparian buffer zone, and staff finds this percentage to be minimally intrusive, which is one of the criteria of developing in the fish and riparian corridor buffer. The applicant stated in their narrative that some non-native vegetation will be removed to install the stormwater swell, and it will be revegetated with native species afterwards. And they have applied for the appropriate permitting for developing within the riparian buffer. Consolidated land use applications, so there are a lot of land use applications within this one, given the long name of the application. But this is a pretty typical process when there's multiple different approvals that are required for one development to uh to take place as proposed. So of those applications that I've mentioned, again, comprehensive plan map amendment, zone change, site development review, and then the three sensitive lands development permits. The applicant requested that these applications be processed as one consolidated application. And this is, you know, to streamline for efficiency, one noticing cycle, one staff report. It saves a ton of staff time to to do it this way, and it saves a ton of time for the developer and applicant as well. On their own, these application types would have three different approval authorities, with sensitive lands being reviewed by the planner, site development being reviewed by the planning commission, and then map amendments and zone changes being reviewed by the city council. However, since this is submitted as a consolidated application, the entire application will be reviewed for approval by the city council as the highest approval authority among the three. Approving site development review is a limited land use decision, but approving the rest of the application types are quasi judicial decisions, and so the whole application will be processed as such. Right of way and public improvements, the subject site has frontage on but no direct access to Columbia River Highway. Access to the subject site is currently gained indirectly from Scappus-Fernonia Highway and then through private property, given some easements that are in place right now. Uh since the subject site has no direct frontage on Scappus-Fernonia Highway, the applicant will not be required by the city to perform frontage improvements on Scappus-Fernonia Highway. Although the applicant technically has a little bit of frontage on Columbia River Highway, street improvements are not called for in the city's transportation system plan or in the transportation impact study letter that the applicant had a traffic consultant put together um on this portion of Columbia River Highway. Therefore, they will not be required to perform frontage improvements on the highway. They are proposing to install a twenty six foot wide driveway entrance and drive aisle from Scappus-Fernonia Highway through the Crown Z Trail parcel and then also tax lot eighteen hundred to the proposed mini storage facility. The applicant will be required by the conditions of approval to establish the necessary easements for this to take place between the subject site, tax lot eighteen hundred, excuse me, and the Crown Z Trail. The applicant is proposing to install a sliding entry gate along the drive aisle past the parking lot for security purposes. So if you look at the site plan, you can get to the parking lot and the main office and the caretaker dwelling, but not the private storage units. Um our parking chapter requires one vehicular parking space for every two hundred square feet of gross office floor area for a mini storage facility, plus two spaces for a caretaker residence. The new office is proposed to be five hundred square feet, and there will be a caretaker residence. And so the applicant would be required to provide five parking spaces, and that is what they're proposing to do. Commercial uses require the provision of two bicycle spaces per primary use or one for every five required vehicular spaces, whichever ends up being greater. Based on in this scenario, two being greater than one, two would be the required amount for bicycle spaces to provide capacity for, but the parking chapter also provides certain exemptions for bicycle parking, especially if the use just isn't typically compatible with bicycle users. If you can carry a couch on your bicycle, I'd be pretty impressed, but most people can't. And so we think it's pretty reasonable to exonerate them from requiring to provide a bicycle parking area. For traffic generation, the applicant submitted a transportation impact study letter, which includes trip generation estimates, a safety analysis, and then various operational analyses to just look at how the proposed development would operate. The study projects that the proposed development would generate seventy six weekday daily trips, including five morning peak hour trips and seven evening peak hour trips. The applicant's study provides a look at the Crown Z Trail intersection with the subject site's access point. The traffic engineer supports and has deemed adequate the applicant's proposed measures of awareness and protection. They've got signage up in their proposed plan and then also a crosswalk strip. The study concluded that the existing driveway can accommodate traffic generated by the proposed development and continue to be shared with the adjacent property. Additionally, the study found that there is sufficient site distance at the driveway, and there is no crash history attributed to the driveway. Driveway meets access spacing standards, and then the driveway design accounts for the Crown Z Trail, as mentioned before. Therefore, no additional analysis or no further off-site mitigations are recommended. As part of the fifty year plan and long range planning project that the city is currently coming to the end of right now, the city is proposing to rezone and re-designate in our comp plan a number of parcels that are within the city limits and UGB. And one of them happens to be the subject site. The applicant desired to have the redesignation and read zone to the property completed on their application timeline, rather than the city's project timeline with the whole fifty year plan project. This is why this application includes the comprehensive plan map amendment and the zone change in the applicant's request. The city completed a transportation planning rule analysis for all impacted parcels. Again, part of the broader fifty year plan outside of this particular application, but it did include the applicant's parcel, and it's described in the analysis as tax lot two seven zero one. Commercial zoning and land uses tend to generate more trips than industrial zoning and land uses. And so to account for the difference between what was anticipated as industrial in our transportation plan and then the applicant's desire for it to be commercial, um the applicant is proposing a trip cap of nine hundred ninety nine daily trips to the site. The TPR analysis, including the proposed trip cap, has been vetted and acknowledged by ODOT as being a valid method of mitigation. They looked at this for all of the parcels that are proposed for rezoning and redesignation and approved the trip caps for all of them. Given that the proposed development is anticipated to generate seventy six daily weekday trips, the proposed trip cap will not inhibit the proposed development. For utilities, there is currently a public eight inch PVC sewer main in the Scappus-Fernonia Highway. The applicant proposes to connect the new office and caretaker buildings to the new to the main with a new four inch PVC lateral. The lateral will connect to the existing manhole on the southern border of tax lot eighteen hundred, and the applicant is proposing to negotiate and establish the necessary utility easements for with impacted property owners for any utility lines that run through multiple private properties. The applicant is proposing to install catch basins throughout the site to collect stormwater generated on site, which will then be conveyed to a new stormwater detention swell to the north of the paved area and then another to the southeast of the proposed paved area. The swales are proposed to be four feet deep each and will treat and detain the stormwater generated by the development up to and including a twenty five year storm event, which meets our standards. There is an existing eight inch C nine hundred water main in Scappus-Fernonia Highway with a perpendicular two inch PVC lateral running towards the subject site. From the meter, the applicant is proposing to extend the lateral north and then east to serve the new office and caretaker dwelling. Where the lateral breaks east to serve the proposed development, the applicant has proposed for the line to continue northward to serve another property. However, the City of Scappus Public Works Director's referral comment, which is in the packet and the recommended conditions of approval, require each property to be serviced by its own meter to meet our standards. The applicant is proposing to negotiate and establish the necessary easements for lines that cross properties. Landscaping, buffering, and screening. The proposed commercial use would directly abut a public use, that's the Crown Z Trail to its south. Buffering and screening are required where the subject site abuts public uses, and the applicant is proposed to provide that along the whole shared border between the development and then the Crown Z Trail. Public and private agencies, the City Scappus City Manager, Public Works Director, Chief of Police, Columbia County Building Official, and then the Columbia County Building Official, Public Works Director, General Services Director, who oversees their parks. And then Oregon State Agencies, which include Oregon Department of Land Conservation Development. That's the state's land use planning agency. The Department of Transportation, Department of State Lands, Department of Fish and Wildlife, the Scappus Rural Fire Protection District, and the Columbia River PUD have been provided an opportunity to review and comment on the proposal, which is something standard we do whenever there's a large development taking place. We inform all these agencies and so we can get their comments ahead of time, so that the applicant has a fair shot of knowing what's going to be required. The PUD provided a referral comment that they have reviewed the application and have no objection to its approval. ODFW provided a comment and that they have reviewed the application and also have no objections as submitted. Additionally, they provided a few suggestions from their habitat biologists to consider adding diversity to the list of native sedges and rushes, and then consider adding some species of woody debris in the bottom and banks of the swales. Since these were deliberately phrased by the folks we talked to at ODFW as suggestions, we passed these on to the applicant, but we're not able to require them since they weren't issued as requirements from the state. ODOT provided a referral comment stating that they have reviewed the application and also have no objection as submitted. It provided a few comments of note. The development includes a caretaker residence, and while it would be appropriate to include one single family dwelling unit in the chip trip generation, the total associated trips with the site would not be thrown off that much by one single family unit being put into the count of seventy six already. ODOT maintains jurisdiction of US thirty or Highway thirty, and ODOT approval shall be required for all proposed mitigation measures to the facility. No mitigation measures have been proposed, and this appears to be reasonable to ODOT. And then the traffic study have been was that the applicant provided was completed within ODOT standards, and no further analysis should be required. The transportation planning rule analysis that the city completed that I mentioned earlier is part of the fifty year plan in coordination with ODOT prior to the review of this proposal. And as part of that review, ODOT vetted the trip cap, which is their mitigation tool for the difference between industrial and commercial levels of trips, and they found that to be acceptable. Building official provided a comment that all buildings once built must meet current codes and that the owner must obtain all necessary permitting, and this has been included in the conditions of approval. The Columbia County Public Works Department provided a referral comment uh which includes items related to permitting, street improvements, the existing culvert along the front edge, stormwater management, and the intersection with the Crown Z Trail. All these requirements provided by the county have been included in the required conditions of approval. The County General Services Department, which includes their parks for the Crown Z Trail, uh provided a referral comment, and they they had some comments on the site's access through the Crown Z Trail, utility installation and restoration and crosswalk striping. All of those are included in the conditions of approval. The City of Scappus Public Works Director provided a referral comment stating that they have no objection, provided that it meets the criteria. Their comment did also mention, though, the vault for the fire water system be located near the proposed water meter, that the metered service only serve one site, which is the subject site in this case. As I mentioned, it can't tee off and then go serve another site. So the applicant has agreed to address that. And uh yeah, and then the that the forced main termination at the downstream manhole meet the applicable standards in our public works design standards. The Fire District provided a comment related to hydrants accessing and applicable fire code, fire code standards. All standards and requirements are in the conditions of approval. And then for a mailed notice, whenever there's a proposed development in advance of any public hearing or the staff report being written, we notice, in this case, all property owners within three hundred feet of the subject site. This was done on June thirtieth, and it was also posted in the June twenty seventh edition of the Spotlight and then posted on the subject site with accordance with our quasi judicial chapter. As of today, and the deadline to do so would have been Friday, we have received no comments from the public. Moving to the findings of fact, staff's findings related to uh chapter twelve point ten visual clearance can be found on pages fifty five through fifty seven of the council packet. Chapter seventeen twenty. Chapter 1722 Amendments to the Title Comprehensive Plan and Maps, Pages 57 and 58. Chapter 1768 Expanded Commercial, Pages 58 and 59. Chapter 17.84 Sensitive Lands Flooding, Pages 59 through 64. Chapter 17.85 Sensitive Lands Wetlands, Pages 64 through 67. Chapter 17.89 Sensitive Lands Fish and Riparian Corridor Overlay, Pages 67 through 69. Chapter 17.100 Landscaping, Screening, and Fencing, Pages 69 through 73. Chapter 17.106 Off-Street Parking and Loading Requirements, Pages 73 through 83. Chapter 17.120 Site Development Review, Pages 83 through 90. Chapter 17.154 Street Utility Improvement Standards, Pages 90 through 94. Chapter 17.162 Procedures for Quasi-Judicial Decision Making, Pages 95 through 98. Comprehensive Plan Policies for Economics, Pages 98 through 100. Comprehensive Plan Policies for the Commercial Land Use Designation, Pages 101. Oregon Administrative Rules for Application, Pages 101 and 102. Oregon Administrative Rules for Plan and Land Use Regulation Amendments, Pages 102 and 103. Oregon Statewide Planning Goals, Pages 103 through 105. Based on the findings of fact and materials submitted by the applicant, staff previously recommended that the Planning Commission recommend approval of this application to council. Planning Commission held a public hearing for this application on July 10, 2025, and have provided a recommendation of approval to the city council based on the evidence and applicable approval criteria. Here tonight, staff and planning commission recommend that council adopt Ordinance 921, thereby approving CPMA 1-25, ZZ 1-25, SDR 1-25, SLDP 125, 225, and 325, subjects to the conditions of approval on Pages 105 through 110. This time, I can take any questions that you have on the application. Before we get into the staff's presentation, we also have Lori and Chris here to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I heard this, but this does, our 50-year plan does take this into consideration because this was part of what we were planning to go through, so this change won't affect that at all. One question I had. The driveway, it, it kind of goes through another property owner's property for just a hair there and then gets on, and there's one gate in and out. Is that correct?
Correct.
And very thorough. Thank you, NJ, for a lot of this information. Counselor Holmes. Go ahead, Counselor Holmes.
Okay, I think Counselor Santiago was up first, but I'll go ahead and go. So thank you for the presentation of information. It is very thorough. So one piece of information that I couldn't readily find. So light industrial allows facilities to be a maximum of three acres. What is being proposed with these buildings? Are we talking a factor of like point five?
The whole, yeah, the whole, so there, that's why they're proposing the zone change to expanded commercial, but beyond the three acres that light industrial would allow, the whole, it's sort of inexact to, to count it, but the whole site is 9.39 acres, and it, it appears they're impacting with development about half of that, just taking a look.
Approximately 4.5 acres of storage units.
Oh, thank you. 4.1.
Okay, thank you. I've got other questions, but I'll defer to Counselor Santiago.
Go ahead. Finish it.
Okay.
Because you already asked one of the questions I was gonna ask. Thank, go ahead.
Great. Has the county been consulted? I know, NJ, you'd listed a number of agencies that offered some support with the appropriate conditions being met. How, how does this use with 76 daily trips intersect with, I think, the goals of, you know, expanded use on the CZ Trail with pedestrians and bikers? I would say having, this was actually the stretch I biked this weekend. I'm not sure there's many other sections of the CZ Trail that would have that many road trips, even some of the, the roads, and those roads are very distinctly marked. You know, I am concerned, I get concerned every time I bike past a driveway that a car is gonna pop out. Hopefully, other riders are as, you know, aware. But those intersections or like high-traffic areas have bollards, they're very distinctly marked. I have some, I have some safety concerns about incompatibility with the trail.
Yeah, great, great question. That's, that's really one of the, one of the key, really key components of this whole development, given their unique access and how they get to their, their private site. So I'm looking here, the, and if you want to turn to it, the County Parks Department, their comment is on Page 245 of the packet. And so all, all of these comments are related to the, the trail crossing here, and they're, they're pretty specific. The county does a really, really good job of, you know, looking at the specific development and then, you know, making comments that are super dialed into that. So they're, they're looking at it, too. The, the traffic study that the applicant had to do by their consultant looked at it and thought that the measures of mitigation with the, the crosswalk, the awareness signing, that that was all really reasonable. And then additionally, ODOT looked at, you know, the traffic study that the applicant submitted and, and thought that the mitigation made sense.
Okay, thank you.
I would say, too, if I could add, that 76 trips is, is quite low for a daily count. And that, you know, if, if you've ridden your bike along there before, Counselor Holmes, the, the situation, once this development is completed, will be quite an improvement in terms of safety at that crossing.
Thank you.
Just to add to that, we, I, I think NJ mentioned that the traffic engineer did make some recommendations there for signage, appropriate signage. MUTCD actually calls for, they have very specific code requirements for signage where you're crossing a major mixed-use trail, and it's essentially the same method that'll be used here is, is that was used at Miller Road, where it crosses the trail there. It'll look virtually the same.
That drive is being used by Dan's auto body at this time? Is that correct? As a gravel, basically?
Correct, yeah.
And improved, I mean, there's cars going there now, and it will be improved and signage and.
We look at, daily trips is kind of the gross count. We really look at PMP power trips when we're doing these analysis, and so it's essentially a tenth of that. And when you look at it through that lens, a single-family home has 10 daily trips. And so this essentially is acting like seven, you know, single-family residential properties.
Not unreasonable to believe, say, the mobile home park that's also on there would have more daily trips than this would?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
Counselor Santiago, did you have any other?
Yes, I do. And just, thank you for, Counselor Holmes, for, for asking some of the questions. In addition to the size, because I also have that question. And of course, it's, I, I don't, I re, I mean, I understand, and I speak two languages, but I don't speak planning, so sometimes some of these graphics I have, doesn't make sense to me. But, so the size of, of the, because you, you guys mentioned commercial land, it's unlimited, so there's really, there really no cap. And even though they showed the plans at, say, I think you said four acres, NJ, what is, are they, once developed, can they go further out? I mean, is, because it's unlimited and the commercial mark, as a commercial zone, also, can they go high? Because I've seen storage units that are just long, but also high. Is there any limits to any of that?
So the, when, when the applicant was putting together their, their plan, and, and as I, I kind of mentioned, and you can, you can just see with all the creeks around and the floodplain and stuff, they really are kind of like maximizing the use of this site. And so there's, there's not, I, I, I bet if they could go out further without, you know, getting into more trouble with sensitive lands, I bet they would. And the, the height limit, they, they can't change it after development, but right now, we do look at building height within our, the, the zone that they're applying to be in the expanded commercial, and they're, they're well under that. I believe they want just a few of these to be for, like RV park, or excuse me, like RVs to be able to park in there. Just, just a few of the longer ones that you see, but those would be the only ones that would be like taller than single-story.
And what is that, and as far as feet?
I believe the highest one, I can look at it super quick, but I believe the highest one, 18? Okay, 18 feet. Thank you, Matt.
18 feet, okay. And then it relates to the traffic questions. A lot of those trip counts, it's gonna be bigger trucks, right? Instead of normal SUV four-door cars, you're talking here more trucks, trucks that are gonna be loading and unloading. And does that change? Does that make a difference?
Yeah, like, like pickup trucks, not necessarily like, like heavy, heavy rigging semi-type of things. It's, you know, a, a lot of people will use this, you know, just for, just like you think of people using a storage unit for, for their homes, or their, their kid who's in college, or what, what have you. Some businesses would use this, too, but no, it's not, it's not related to any of the other heavy rigging uses that are existing on the site now or around the site in future.
Okay, and my last question is, you know, you mentioned that the applicant will comply with promises and, and so is there, is there, or who will be the party to be, I guess, seen overseeing that they do comply with all the regulations? And, and it's how often would those auditing or reporting be, be done? Since we're seeing sometimes that even though an application goes through, things come up at the end. So who's gonna be doing that, that type of monitoring, monitoring the project?
The, the short answer is everyone, because, you know, all of the, all of the different agencies that we mentioned, we provided an opportunity to take a look at this and provide their comments on her because they have some kind of regulatory interest in the site. And so, you know, with the Columbia County General Services, it's gonna be the trail that we've talked a lot about. With, you know, making sure it's all up to code, that's gonna be our building official. Lori and I will be going on the site once it's constructed in order to make sure that, you know, the layout and setbacks are what they're showing on the plans. You, you know, utilities will be looked at for the office and caretaker dwelling. And then further, you know, after all of the permits are approved and, and things are moving with their site, anytime, and it'd be hard to move around a building to, you know, ruin their compliance, but, you know, during the time, if something does come up, our, our, our way of doing that is, is through complaints. You know, we have a code enforcement department through our police. You know, and then it would get handled at that point, and they would be, that, we, we, we receive a lot of complaints, land use-related, and then we're able to, you know, correct the issue, whether it's moving a shed or something like that. So we, we do it as it comes up. But it, a, a lot of the stuff that, you know, there, there, that helps them meet their requirements, they can't necessarily move around afterwards.
I had one, one additional item to add. The trip cap, which is a component of the Comp Plan Map Amendment and Rezone, that would get recorded as a condition against the property, so it would be a deed restriction. So that, that is very hard and fast. That would be a requirement for them to be issued building permits. And again, as we stated, they're well below that, that threshold, so it's not going to change anything for, for this application. But just to answer your question, that, that would get recorded against the property.
And what happens after that? I don't know, just curious, curious, like, what happens if they, if they don't comply?
Are you talking traffic?
Or just in general, I mean, so because you said, so it's a code enforcement issue, and therefore there, that's the police department takes over.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we have the ability, you know, to enforce fines. We almost never get there. We, you know, are normally able to just work with the, the owner of the land and, and get them, get them in compliance. A lot of the times, they just don't realize they're out of compliance, not with a big commercial development like this, but with a homeowner, you know, kind of thing. So, yeah, I mean, we, we have that kind of authority, but it, it almost never gets there.
Is there a occupancy permit that will be signed off on at the end, but once everything is done according to the code? And is the trip count generated by the number of units that they're, they're estimating? Like, if they decided to make GNF two stories, and you could go upstairs and they increase the number of units, would that then increase another trip check requirement? I mean, can they make changes, or this is the plan that we're agreeing to, that they want to stick with this plan?
Any, any kind of, we have certain triggers of when you have to reapply for development, and one of them is if your, you know, anticipated trip generation number is in so much excess of what you originally approved for. So those, those kind of triggers exist, and they would have to reapply and go through this process again.
So NJ, and, well, first of all, thank you, Lori, and thank you, Ben, for answering my questions with the email earlier. Thank you, I appreciate that. And, and just to, just to clarify something that I think I was, I was told that, even though everything's put together, we don't necessarily have to approve everything, but this is, I guess, to keep it, I guess, a time limit, there's a time limit. I know this application started, I think, in November 2024?
Yep.
Right, so just to put it out there for record, I mean, we, we could approve it all, but we, we don't need to. Not every part of it. Is that right?
If you were to not, you would need to present findings as to why you're not approving it. All of this, this whole thing is, you, you have, you have to, you know, based on the criteria that we have available in the staff report, some kind of finding as to why.
Okay.
And then who handles the stormwater retention? Is that kind of, we sign off on that?
Yeah, I work, I work with the, the building official and, and our, you know, NJ and Lori, and we collectively review all of the criteria, including the stormwater facility. And I just wanted to add also that, that, that's also, there's also a maintenance agreement that we require on all site development projects for them to sign a, a maintenance agreement on their storm facilities that gets recorded against the property. It kind of memorializes that. Also, it outlines, you know, sort of the maintenance that, that's expected on that facility so that future property owners can have access to those documents. And, and we do, prior to occupancy, will review all of those ancillary requirements from all the other agencies. We look for, you know, compliance confirmation from them, and then our own, our own conditions for our own code, and we'll review all of that before the building official will sign off.
Counselor Holmes?
All right, I was trying to get off mute. NJ, I just wanted to revisit your, your prior statement about, say, if something were to deviate from kind of the original application, it could trigger reapplication and reuse, kind of trip counts as an example. So are we talking if they were substantially above the 76 daily trip counts or above the 900 and something that was previously thrown out?
Yeah, it's above what they were approved for, so that's the 76. So if the, basically, yeah, if the development exceeds what the original development was, then it would trigger relooking at this.
Okay. But we would maybe not know the reality of that until the development is complete.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, these are, the, the trip generation, they're, they're all estimates. And we, you know, they're, they're so far from 1,000, we're not necessarily worried about that. But the, the trip generation estimates, doing them at this stage isn't to be perfect. It's really to, you know, figure out the level of impact and then also to generate how much they're gonna pay in transportation STCs.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions?
I do have one question. Uh, is there, I don't know if you, uh. Is there any other developer or any other party that is interested in this property? Or you guys haven't, um, you guys haven't really explored it because of this applicant has been. Has been um, the process since November twenty twenty four.
We're we're not really party to that as the city. We we've been kind of working with um, the applicant who has a. Temporary purchase and sale agreement in place should this be approved. Um, and so they're they're the ones with the right to, you know, get this far in the process.
I do believe the prop- property has been for sale. For some time, so. So other people have had opportunities.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um. Now that's staff reports, so now an applicant presentation, if you guys would like to provide anything else you think we missed or?
Hi, my name's Adam Offset. I am, I guess, the developer of this property, that's all I can say. So I I think it's important uh. To get down to the, you know, why we ended up here. Oh, sure, sorry about that. So I think it's important to get uh, how we ended up here in the first place. Um, I was looking to develop storage somewhere and. Uh, as I spoke in front of the planning commission, um, we hired a independent feasibility uh. Firm, yeah, yeah, analyst. Um, she does approximately a hundred and twenty feasibility studies a year. Uh, we examined the corridor from Hillsborough through Scappus, through St. Helens. Uh, all the way up the corridor here. And she weighs a lot of stuff. One of, one of the things is uh, what, you know, what what is the occupancy of the current storage? Scappus uh, residents don't have a ton of options on storage. It is absolutely full here. Uh, we really started to look in this area after that report was generated. The occupancy is ninety, ninety seven percent and greater is when she did the study of the storage here. In uh, Scappus. Uh, Scappus is missing uh, any large storage. Everything is small. Uh, as this town grows, uh, that stuff is going to be parked out on the street is what happens. Um, there's just nowhere for it to go. Uh, people are, you know. Getting certain amount of storage setup where uh, things are outside, I've seen in a few places. The idea with this place, it's able to house stuff inside. And it's not just your typical storage where we've set every unit as a three by five with a single operation door. This will also serve businesses. So uh, many businesses need a inexpensive place to store their equipment. Uh, they'll be able to do that here. We've we've set a a whole setup of doors that are twelve wide by fourteen high. That can get oversized stuff into these units. Um, there's no other storage around here like that that can get it inside. Uh, what that would mean, businesses may be able to call this their headquarters at a very low cost per square foot rate. The same with the residence. Uh, this stuff usually rents around seventy cents to a dollar a foot. Uh, you can't get any kind of commercial unit anywhere close to that to operate your business. Or your home business, anything like that. Um, there is a solid need in this area. Uh, it's been demonstrated, we have a. I don't even know how big the report is, but uh, I think you guys have that report too. I I think we we turn that in, so uh. Anyways, I think that's number one. Number two, I think it's important to look at what's already happening on the property for the uh, trip generation. Uh, OXPO heavy uh, moving is already operating out of there. They have a full staff working there. Uh, I walked through the place, they've got to have twenty people in there. Uh, they also are renting the property to. Uh, tanker trucks who store their trucks there. They also store most of their heavy moving trucks there. Uh, they're already generating, yeah, well beyond the strip count than we are. Uh, I think. You know, looking at the use of this land, uh, I would consider if we're looking to reduce trips, a storage complex would be a. Home run. Uh, it would be the least amount of trips you could come up with for any business you can think of, anything, it's it's the lowest. Um, as you know, people often, you know, on the residential side, they'll get into a storage unit and. They may only go there once every three to six months. You know, we're going to have somewhere around four, four hundred units and that will greatly uh. Impact uh, storage in this area. It also will add a little bit of competitiveness with the other storage units and it will help to drive costs down. Right now, there's almost a monopoly out here in stores. And, you know, we drive down the road and of course, uh, everybody thinks like I do. I see one on the corner here and there's one up here, up 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 the road, but. The facts are, even with this little town, it's all full. So um, there is a need, I would not uh, be standing here attempting to. You know, uh. Put put my uh, money out there and, you know, waging on this. Uh, businesses even making it, if there is not a tremendous need here, I would actually. Uh, just easily pack up and, you know, go somewhere else. Um, this piece of land too, I think is also. It's good to know that it's extremely difficult to develop this piece of land. It's been for sale for years. Uh, the last time that it was sold, uh, it it was a process was many, many months long and they just could not get past all the hurdles on this piece of land. I do think it's important to say too, that we got in uh, just prior to the laws changing for uh. Land use at on this piece of land, if this does not go through. Uh, the riparian zone being next to a creek is going to expand to some crazy number and it's going to be uh, double or triple of what it is now. It will. Make this piece of land uh, almost not developable anymore and. It's a nine acre piece, we were able to squeeze barely four acres out of this piece of land because. It is so difficult. There's wetlands, riparian zones, all this stuff, there's easements. So it was really challenging and it took an entire team of people how to figure out how to make this work. And then going down to the zoning change, we needed to change the zoning because. We simply, even with storage, we simply can't get enough units on this place on the light industrial side. Um, it limits us to to our units and we can't build those big units that this town really, really needs, so. Any, any questions I can answer?
I have a question for you. Um.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I got one here.
Oh, thank you for giving that overview. Um, can you share a little bit more when you mentioned uh, this could be an opportunity for businesses? For their headquarters? Can you just share? What do you have in mind? What what could that look like?
So. Things I know, um, my dad has always run a painting business ever since I was a little kid, uh, painted apartment complexes. This is how he's always operated. He never had a home base for his stuff. He would find storage areas who would uh, have larger units and that would be his operations. He would keep those around certain areas. Uh, it's a much more um, economical way to operate your business. You need to store stuff. Uh, he would find someone with a little thing and it's not where anybody is going to stay there. Not going to have an office there, anything like that, but it will be a storage of their equipment. And a means for them to operate a business and not have it uh, at their home, held in their garage and. The square footage is really reasonable for this stuff. The larger the units go, the smaller the square unit uh, footage cost goes, so. We might be down in the seventy five cents a foot, you know, on those and then. We could also, you know, as time goes on, you can partition these units. We could, uh, and it's always, it'll be really good because it's, it's whatever the community needs. They're going to tell us what they need. We just need to be able to adapt. So we might take these thirty footers that are twelve wide, fourteen high, we might. Put a partition in those and shrink that down to, you know, maybe we decide we don't need that, but. As a feasibility study has said, every single large unit we put in will be immediately full. It'll be the first things to fill, so.
Will there be like electrical in there as well? So if like people need to like hook up?
And it's a, it's, yeah, one, one ten kind of stuff, nothing, nothing big.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Holmes, you have a question? I mean Santiago?
That's okay. I I'm gonna just expand and clarify uh, um, with um. A question here, so you said there was no, uh, they can't do business inside or in sight. Is that correct? There's like.
Correct.
Uh, uh, no transaction, no mail sent to businesses?
So this will be a storage based.
Um, is this going to be a franchise?
It is, it is not.
It is not, okay, thank you.
And I see with a hundred houses going in and if we're already a ninety seven percent full and these are smaller house, smaller lots, you know, there's not a lot of room on them like.
Um, Anamor and your colleague there, I've I've got three questions. So the first one is, what are you going to be doing? This this area is almost certainly going to flood at some point. And so what what kind of flood resistance measures are you going to implement for the, for the protect the goods inside these storage units?
Sure, the biggest thing for us is to make sure that whatever we do put in these units, they don't go downstream, they stay put. We've done a bunch of extra anchoring of the buildings themselves. And uh, they've uh, added foundation details to make sure it can actually hold the buildings down if there is some kind of a. Uh, flood event.
All the foundations are all at least finished floors or at least one foot of.
Max, can you talk to the mic? Sorry, sorry. Yeah, so the city has quite a few requirements we have to meet based on, based on being in a floodplain. And one of them is that the um, finished floor elevation of any of the buildings that are in the floodplain has to be a foot above the base flood elevation. Um, in addition, there has to be anchorage for the buildings, utilities have to be watertight. The city definitely has requirements that protect from that.
And I know, I I I know they they're very thorough at checking the appropriate boxes. I I have complete confidence they've fulfilled their their mission. But my my question is, is kind of the reality thing. So you're probably aware that. Over forty percent of FEMA flood claims lie outside the FEMA flood delineations. This is nationwide. So the the FEMA calculations are notoriously inaccurate. And so with that in context, you know, uh, like the, like insurers use the First Street Foundation for uh, determining, uh, protect, projecting flood levels. And I I took a look at your property and uh, First Street has a kind of a three to five foot range uh, maximum flood level. So, so if 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 it was, if you had a five foot flood, it's pretty, you're probably going to have some issues there.
Yeah, the whole city probably will.
Yeah, the whole city will, certainly will. So then it goes to the, will you be able to ensure that the the property with flood insurance?
Yeah, we have no issue at all. Uh, we have no issue at all getting insurance.
Okay, so 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 the people that put their their valuables there will have, will have some recourse for for flood damage.
Uh, so in general, as an apartment complex, as this kind of stuff, it's asked that uh, tenants have their own insurance. We never know if they're bringing in an item that's worth five bucks or a hundred thousand dollars. Um, they should provide insurance to cover that. It's 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 never the building owner on this stuff.
So so then I'm I'm gonna pivot over here. Will it, will the city have any liability in a catastrophic flood uh, in in this case?
Or would you take that?
I don't believe so because the applicant would be meeting the criteria that's on the books, so therefore.
So the box is checked, so we're we're safe there.
Yeah.
And I do believe this is my homeowner's insurance covers some material in a rental unit.
It does.
Correct, yeah.
And then my third question relates to the uh, the CZ buffering. You you listed a, a six foot cedar fence. Um, it it, but it says typical, so that could that change into some other uh, material?
Yeah, sure.
So but but it will be a six foot fence that's going to buffer the the trail from the, from the, from the units.
Yeah, that's, that's what the uh, so far the city's asked for. We've, we're happy to comply.
But yeah, but you could, you could.
Trees and shrubs as well. I think there's forty three trees planted along that, yeah.
Yeah, I think I think that that aspect was going to be a huge improvement to the city, the crossing and everything, so thumbs up on that. But anyway, well, thank you.
Counselor Holmes?
Yeah, I guess uh, my question pertains to timing. So if the consideration of rezoning this property was going to be part of the fifty year plan discussion. And I believe that's just a few months off, why are we kind of. Potentially putting the cart before the horse in changing the zoning of one parcel within a much larger area? That we intend to have input from the fifty year planning committee and and other committee members more holistically on the changes we'll be considering for the city.
I can, I can take that. I mean, I think from the applicant's perspective, they have a timeline they're trying to meet. For their development and because we are working with committees, um, there was no certainty to our timeline. They needed assurance to know that it was on a a timeline that they had control over, uh, whereas ours was not. So um, the committee work has has been completed at this time. Uh, we don't expect that we will be going to hearings likely until November or early December. Um, based on, uh, let's see, we have a work session with council um, at the next meeting. Um, after that, we'll need to take that back and um, finish our analysis. And which is mostly done, but we had to hold off until we had council input on these last few pieces. Um, anyhow, but in the, in the large scheme of things, this was already considered for rezone. Uh, as is the parcel to the north of it, the Oregon Meat Company parcel. So it does already fit into what we had planned for. Um, we already, as uh, NJ mentioned, completed the. Transportation Planning Rule Analysis and have worked with ODOT on this. So again, it's part of the overall plan. But our timeline was so uncertain that the applicant really needed some certainty on their end.
Can I add to that? So the um. Way back last year when they had first approached this in November, that was the consideration we wanted to pursue, the applicant wanted to pursue. It it is, it would have been cheaper for them to wait for our process to go through because that's us paying for a lot of these studies, not them. That, and and just as Lori had echoed, and it really came down to it, they have their contract, their negotiations, they're trying to get this deal to close. They have. Time is money when you're a developer and if we couldn't get it done by May, June, July. Uh, without a certainty, that's going to cost them money as well. So they're actually putting money ahead. Into this process to do a lot of this because of that lack of certainty on our side, which has proven. To even still be, you know, we're still out till December, January. It's just unknown. Um, and when operating as a business, they would, they just determined at that time it was worth putting the extra money in to go ahead of our schedule. Even though if they waited, it would have saved them money for those studies, but. Assumption is they would have lost money overall because getting this is, time is money on that, so.
Also doesn't, I mean, not everything, it would have been a zone change, but they still would have had to go through a lot of these processes to get all these different. Amendments done and one twenty five, all these things would have still done, so that would add in more time.
Right.
Once we even changed it, they would have then almost had to start from there.
Yeah, they still would have had to complete, you know, their plans set and all the studies that they did have to do. One thing, um, you know, the city doing the traffic study um, was a help. That saves some time because we'd been working on it for a long time. So um, there there was some, you know, benefit to us having started that process. But, you know, when you're talking about public hearings and adoption of so many components for the fifty year plan, there really is no way to say when that's going to be done.
Thank you.
And to just add one more thing to all of this too, is that it's not that like uh, zone changes can be proposed by private developers if they need to do it in order to make. Their their plan work. Um, it it just so happens that this is a, it's a pretty unique circumstance to be aligned with our fifty year plan, but it it it's proposed by. Private developers um, when it needs to work for their site.
Okay, um, we, applicant's presentation, now we are looking for testimony and support. Anybody here to, in support? And. Anybody, then we're looking for testimony neutral. And then nobody here, so we're looking at uh, testimony in opposition. And like you said, you haven't received anything from any community members in any. Support neutrality or opposition.
Correct.
And then so there won't, based on what you've heard and the questions we have, is there any rebuttal by the applicant you'd like to address before we have the staff response? You've answered all the questions we've had? Okay, and then the staff response?
Not, not much to, not much to add, uh, you know, it is, it's. Not, not much to, not much to add, uh, you know, it is, it's a lot of different applications in one, and I get that, and it makes it, you know, a, a bigger thing to deal with, but we as staff really believe that, that when you dig into the details of each of the six application types, that they are well beyond meeting the criteria necessary for each of those individually. And that's really what's laid out in the, the staff report and what Planning Commission took a look at. It's kind of what we're all talking about here tonight, based on the, the criteria. We, we believe that they soundly meet all of those and that it'll be enforced and ensured that they meet our standards by the conditions of approval. Lori, Chris, is there anything you want to add in staff response?
No, and I do like too, that it, it's addressing our valuation that we have a lack of commercial acreage here and we're able to address that even before the fifty-year plan. And with possible tenant, we have a lot of industrial land out there that's still not being developed, it takes a lot of time. And here's an opportunity to develop a piece as soon as it's changed over. Okay, so no more staff response, so we are now going to close the public hearing. And now we will deliberate as a council. Is there any discussion, any more thoughts or questions? As we, you know, looking at the criteria, very thorough. My personal knowledge, that space is very hard to develop. That if this doesn't happen, it could sit there unused for a long time, it'd be very hard to develop it. And this looks like it fits within, it's very developable with what their plan is.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm not wild about adding acres of impervious surface to a flood plain, but then there are significantly worse uses that could be employed here. So, so yet, I, I would, I'm not going to oppose it, but I mean, I'm not wild about that, doing anything to encroach on the flood plain. But in this case, this is, this is better, the worse, the better, the lesser of evils.
Understood. Okay. Yes, Counselor Holmes?
Yeah, Lori or NJ, can you remind us, what are the proposed chan-changes in other areas in that zone? Are we looking as part of the fifty-year plan to change those to also commercial, which could increase activity and development on this flood plain? I don't look at this in isolation, and I guess that's my concern with this being part of a, a bigger change on the horizon.
Are you asking, can, can you restate that? Are you asking in, in relation to the flood plain, what other parcels have flood plain that are getting rezoned?
So in that area of the city that we're considering for rezoning with, as part of the fifty-year plan, are there other properties adjacent? So are we, you know, ultimately, I mean, are we looking at potentially, you know, this is one personal approval, but if we are looking holistically at broader change, are we, you know, really looking at stressing this ecosystem potentially? Because, and I guess that just goes back to my previous comment about, you know, are there, I'm a little concerned, uh, looking at this change in isolation when we have broader sweeping changes that we're considering to other lands in that section of town, without really having the thorough conversation with the fifty-year committee and getting all their feedback.
Sure, yeah, they have provided all of their feedback at this point. But to answer your question, and, and we'll bring that to you on the eighteenth, but to answer your question about this particular area of town, the abutting property to the north that abuts Highway thirty where the Oregon Meat Company is located, that is also proposed for a rezone. It also has areas of flood plain and wetlands, so it will likewise be also difficult to develop. It does have an existing building on it now, so I, I don't know, we have not heard of any development proposals being, you know, talked about yet for that site, so I, I can't say what eventually would go there. Again, it's been developed, you know, in the past already. But in terms of on the west side of Highway thirty in this quadrant, those are the only two parcels proposed for rezone.
Okay, and I guess I would just add as being a, a participant in the fifty-year plan, yes, we all did, we've wrapped up our input, but I'm not sure that there was entirely consensus on the final proposal as well. And not, not pertaining necessarily to this section of town, but just in general.
Right, right. Okay, I, oh, I, sorry, one little additional thing. I guess the, the thing I would say to, to keep in mind is that with any future development proposal, we'll go through the same process of vetting it against the code to make sure it meets the criteria. So again, this will always be looked at for any new future development, we'll be vetting it against the existing code to ensure it meets our standards.
Lori, I just, just to, is this development because there's, the code's going to be changing for the flood plain? Is that the property or what's going, what's happening now going to affect the property, the adjacent property that you're talking about that still hasn't been sold and it could be a problem developing? Is any of this going to affect that property for development, more than it's already, it's an issue?
I mean, this is going to improve the site, in my opinion. It's providing stormwater detention and treatment, whereas there is none now today. It is required to meet all of our codes. Chris, I don't know if you want to speak to anything else on that, but essentially, we don't, we don't expect that the development of this site is going to adversely impact abutting sites.
Okay, thank you.
And it's not all gra, I mean, it's gravel with big trucks and everything right now and being used.
Correct, yeah. So.
So I would just like to say, being on Planning Commission prior to this role here in City Council, we've discussed this property many times over the years, and so I completely understand how challenging it is to do any type of development. To echo Counselor Haugen and Counselor Holmes concerned about the wetlands and the creek, we always want to try to do what's right for the environment, but I think given the fact that you're basically developing half of this land and you've identified a need that we have within the town, which I can personally attest to, we don't have a lot of storage options here, so I do appreciate a service coming in that will be benefited by not just this city, but by the county probably holistically. So overall, thank you. I'm in, I'm in support of moving forward with this, this development.
I have a motion by Counselor Haugen to extend tonight's meeting past nine, and do I have a second?
You have a second.
Second by Counselor Jacobs, any discussion? If you've done all those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Close? Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Hi.
Yeah, halfway there. So after that, all the discussion, does anybody have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Jacobs.
I still move council adopt ordinance two-nine-one, thereby approving CPMA one dash twenty-five, CZ one dash twenty-five, SDR one dash twenty-five, SLDP one dash twenty-five, two dash twenty-five and three dash twenty-five, and accepting the findings and conditions of approval as written.
I have a count, uh, motion by Counselor Jacobs to adopt ordinance nine-twenty-one. Therefore approving CPMA one dash twenty-five, CZ one dash twenty-five, SDR one dash twenty-five, SLDP one dash twenty-five, two dash twenty-five and three dash twenty-five, and accepting the findings and conditions of approval as written, any seconds?
Okay.
Counselor Haugen with a second, any more discussion? We're going to leave it at that?
Yep.
Okay, we will leave it at that as first reading, and we will come back and finish at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Just skip to, nope. Good one here. Another ordinance, first reading, public hearing, an ordinance renaming a portion of southwest Volandam Street to southwest Roken? Is that Roken?
Yeah.
Now they want to, Roken Way. Community Development Director Lori Oliver-Joseph with the staff report tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, so I have an ordinance for you tonight, ordinance nine-twenty-two. That is included as exhibit one. There is a vicinity map so that you can visualize what is being proposed. It's on page two-fifty-four. There is a short section of a new road in the Dutch Canyon four subdivision. Volandam Street is a portion of a road further to the north of this in Dutch Canyon Phase Three. Between that section of Volandam and this section, there is a large undeveloped field. It's currently outside of the UGB. The city does coordinate on, uh, street naming and addressing with the fire district. They have, uh, addressing authority in the city and approve street names. We did coordinate with them on this, however, there was a misunderstanding and they thought that the whole section of that dogleg kind of street would be Roken Way. That was not the case. The plat did get approved with the short section of Volandam on the plat. The only way to officially change a plat for the county surveyor to do that is through the adoption of an ordinance. The Scapu Fire District Chief requested that this length of street be renamed to Southwest Roken Way. And this really is to lessen any confusion for emergency responders or delivery service companies. There would be only two homes that would be addressed off this short section of road, and it just didn't, well, I'll just say the fire district was adamant that this be changed to just alleviate any headaches in the future. I was happy to assist with that. I have provided the findings related to approval criteria, uh, which are on pages twenty, uh, two-fifty-five through two-fifty-eight of the packet. And those criteria are contained in Scapu's municipal code twelve point two-four point oh-two-oh. The Planning Commission did consider this proposal July twenty-fourth and recommended unanimously that council approve the street name change. And nobody provided testimony during that public meeting. And typically, a request is required to be mailed to property owners on the abutting section of street to be renamed. However, those homes are under construction, there's no mail receptacle, so I could not notify anyone except for the developer. So I did notify the developer on June twenty-third. They were happy to have that changed. Obviously, they want, you know, emergency responders and delivery vehicles to find those homes. So we did also notice in the July eleventh edition of the local newspaper, and again, no written comments. So the Planning Commission and staff do recommend that City Council rename this portion of Southwest Volandam Street to Southwest Roken Way. And we have a suggested motion there for you. Again, this would be a first reading, so we'd hold the vote for the next meeting, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just one for me, there, there is an entrance off of Callahan onto there?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Jacobs.
I move that council adopt ordinance nine-two-two to rename a portion of Southwest Volandam Street to Southwest Roken Way as depicted in exhibit one.
A motion by Counselor Jacobs to adopt ordinance nine-two-two to rename a portion of Southwest Volandam Street to Southwest Roken Way as depicted in exhibit one. Any seconds?
Second.
Second by Counselor Haugen. Okay, we will stop there and pick that up at our next meeting, discussion and a vote. Moving on, okay. You were given some homework last time. Number seven, and, uh, back to a work session now discussing the functional areas of assessment. So you guys have a chance to look at all these. Which one of you would like to start?
I can, I can kick us off.
Jacobs, if you can kick us off?
And then pass it. So yes, following up on the work session we had two weeks ago, we followed up that conversation via email and asked, uh, council and mayor to look at the two examples of city manager assessments and in relation to the job description. And we asked for two things for you to review and come prepared for this discussion today, which was, one, identify the top five core functional areas for assessment, and also identify your preference of a rating scale. I want to also just kind of be mindful here of time. I know we all have a lot of thoughts about this, so if possible, I'd like to request that we all be as concise as possible in providing our recommendations. We'll have them captured, I, I will capture them, and then we can, uh, this would be part of Kim and I's work to go and look at the notes of where each counselor landed, and then we can work to come up with some, like to summarize and perhaps land on areas that counselors are similar in, to condense and bring back sort of what a top five criteria would look like. So with that, Counselor Holmes, I'd like to hand it to you, and maybe you can kick us off with what you thought your, what you'd like to see as your five key functional areas. And let's start there, and then we'll, we can do a second goabout on the assessment criteria. Does that sound good?
Yep, I'd be happy to. And I guess I would just add, kind of as we're talking about, you know, the, the key functional areas we're identifying, had a conversation with Ben today, and he raised a really good point that I think then the next step for this group, once we narrow, kind of land on those, is really figuring out kind of how we mutually define kind of the, the, what each of these areas mean and what the traits of success really look like. So this is kind of step one. We define what success looks like and what each of these areas really mean, and then we can kind of build out the questions that will properly assess that. So this is kind of the beginning step here. So my top five, I've got budget and finance, they, they align really well with the examples that were given to us. Community relations, I think we've all kind of identified that as a priority in these past few weeks. Leadership, and within leadership, you know, I think there are a number of kind of areas that fall into that, kind of the, the communication with staff, interpersonal style, administration, personnel functions, and I'd also like to consider, you know, how we're building a culture of accountability across departments within our, our own personal core areas of responsibility and the city manager themselves. So it's kind of one big bucket, intergovernmental relations, and then council relations.
Excellent.
So there's a lot to unpack there in leadership, but I've, I've got it in five.
Yeah, no, I, I totally hear you. I kind of was, I was in the same boat. I want to make it as concise as possible, and I was like, oh, that bucket's going to be big.
That's a big bucket.
Uh, Counselor Santiago?
Oh, I'm, I'm already muted. Okay, so I just, I would like, it's just very simple, obviously, if, if, if the city manager can be the leader in implementing the council goals as, uh, of course, help the oversee the departments and the growth. I would also echo the finance, obviously, that's a huge thing because it's, you know, we have to be profitable in order to keep running. And, and innovation and just creativity, and I, I have seen that with Ben, and I do appreciate that. So he thinks us outside the box, and I appreciate that, so. Simple as that, and, and as far as the two methods, I really like the, because there was one, there was two that you had set out.
Counselor Holmes, Counselor Holmes, can I, can I actually have you pause on that one, and then we'll come back to the criteria?
That was me.
Sorry, Counselor Santiago, I'm looking at Holmes and trying, woo, it's late. Thank you.
The problem.
Okay, uh, Counselor Haugen?
First, thank you to you and Kim for assembling this stuff. I, I like the part one through four rubric you, you adopted, I guess from City of Tigard. I, I think that is very straightforward and makes sense. The, the area I'm struggling with is part five, management staff. I think, I'm trying to get my head around how, how, how we can assess that. And, and I think maybe, maybe. And, and I think maybe, maybe a discussion with the, with the employee union might be worth exploring. Because there's, there's got to be some way of, of getting a valid assessment from staff that we can, we can put into our.
Yes.
Into our appraisal.
Absolutely.
And that to me is the key to, to having a successful effort here. And, and so that discussion probably was involved the union. And I remember going back to my days as a, as a school teacher. Every year, we had, we had an anonymous evaluation of the, both the principal and the superintendent. It was totally anonymous, but it was very effective and everybody participated. And so, you know, maybe if we could fold something like that in. But without, without that part five, you know, I, I just don't see how we can do a complete thorough evaluation of the city manager.
No, absolutely. And that is actually something we have thought through and are exploring as part of this body of work in identifying that, that tool. So there will be more to come on that because that is a shared concern across council. So we can be fair and objective, but also inclusive and really understanding. So thank you. Okay. And Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, probably no in particular order, but kind of going off of Kim, you know, budget and finance. I'd like to see, obviously, I almost added a five, relationship with council. Kind of relating to our council goals and go over the rubric there, but relationship with council. Intergovernmental relationships and community relationships are kind of to me, how is he relating, working outside in, with other agencies? And then kind of I put communication skills with leadership. And that where I would want input from staff or from other people, how we determine to gather that. Kind of get that. That's the, kind of the ones that I had.
Okay. Great.
Kind of combined a few of them.
No, that's, that's, that's great. So, and then I'll just, did Tyler?
Tyler gave me some information. He didn't give me specifics on those, but it was, it was definitely going down the job description, essential job duties. So like administrators enforce the city charter. I mean, I'll kind of look through this and see if there's, if I can see if I can break down any one.
If you want to share it too with Kim and I, we can, we can, you know, go through that as well. And if we have questions, we could reach out. Either one of us can sort of reach out for clarity or just bring it back to the next session.
Yeah.
Okay. And then for my.
It was a staff feedback evaluation, basically, what you would give to the staff to get information.
Oh, okay. So in just sharing also what my top five are, so actually, Counselor Holmes and I are very much aligned, but did not do the homework assignment together. It's budget, did not. Budget and finance, community relations, leadership, I had identified as a really big bucket. So I have a question mark if we need to break that apart. And then intergovernmental relationships, that's where I landed as well. So I think I, from just this quick go around, I can hear a lot of similarities. Sounds like we're, we're all fairly aligned and moving in the right direction. So summarize the notes. Kim and I will do a little bit more work. We'll get that a little bit more crisp and clear so that to Kim's point, or Counselor Holmes' point, the thought is going into the next session, which may want to talk about putting this as a work session because I suspect there'll be a lot of dialogue on this one, if possible.
At the next session, we have another work session scheduled already.
Okay, well, if we have to build it in, I just want to be mindful of, because knowing how much time this will take and I, I want to be mindful of everyone's time. So we can, we can figure this out.
Right, whether it's next or if you want to move it back a meeting and have it where there's an open work session, we can actually focus for an hour on it or.
Okay.
That could be something to look at.
Let's look, on August eighteenth, we do have the work session with fifty-year planning, so it'll be a pretty big one. And then right now, the second readings of these.
Right.
And I don't see much else. So if there's really nothing else, it might work.
There should be also on there, the crown Z, they're going to be doing a presentation of their signage recommendations as well. So it'll take a little bit of time, about a half hour is what they projected.
Let's see, the amount of time you think it would take and we'll see if we have that much time in any upcoming meeting.
Gotcha, okay.
Or work session.
Okay. Counselor Holmes?
Yeah, great to see kind of early alignment on those core, the core functional areas. So the second part of the homework was what type of scale or measurement we'd like to see. I did like in some of them that there was the opportunity to both do a quantitative and qualitative feedback. So I would encourage, my vote would be to, to kind of steer towards having both of those. And I feel like the last time we went through this, when we were trying to kind of optimize our assessment tool about two years ago, we spent an inordinate amount of time on whether it would be a three-point scale or a five-point scale. I think we landed on a five-point scale. I don't know if anyone's got some of those old documents or we could dig that up. But I do like a five-point scale. I think it gives us a little bit more ability to kind of fine tune the feedback and the assessment. One through three just feels a little bit limited. I don't know if others have thoughts.
Okay.
Are you on that one through five able to, like, is, is three meeting expectations? I mean, it's all, we could all have our own opinion, but if it's, if it's all similar.
Yeah, three would be a midpoint, yep.
I can also offer, just from my background in work, I can offer some definitions if, for what a five scale could look like. But yes, to answer your question, three would be you're meeting the expectations of the job. A one would be you're not meeting expectations. A two would be partial expect, partially meeting, which means you're meeting some, but not all. And then a four is like sometimes exceeds and then there's an exceed. So I can bring the definition. Counselor Santiago? Your thoughts on the rating system?
I'm still pondering that. Depends, I guess on the questions. Yes, I, for me, it's, I really like the, you know, the exceeds. I can't remember now, I, I don't have it with me now, right now, but exceeds, it doesn't exceed, but that's only three points. And I guess we discuss on a five point.
Okay, so your preference is more for, you're, you're, you're leaning more towards a five point then? Is that what?
Yeah, I think so. And I, I think it also has a lot to do with the questions that we, we come up with.
Okay. So we'll need to, the questions would not be dependent on what the rating would be. We would, we would want to determine what the rating scale is prior to moving into questions. So I'll take.
The five point, five points, fine.
Okay, got it. Counselor Haugen?
I concur with the five-point scale.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
I'm fine with that. I mean, I do like just simple exceeds or meets, but we can put some.
Rigor into definitions?
Yeah, into definitions. Again, it keeps, how are we going to determine it? How are we going to know some of this stuff? But I don't think that the scale is the scale.
Okay. Did Counselor?
No.
No, okay. For me, I want it to go a bit more simplistic and I really did like the three-tiered rating criteria. Exceeds, meets or needs improvement.
I mean, also, that was kind of my first choice, but I was fine with the five.
Yeah. Sounds like the majority is leaning towards five. So I mean, I don't have strong opposition to that. Just wanted to state my preference. Okay, so just to wrap this up.
Sorry to interrupt. Could we ask Ben? Ben, do you have a preference on a three-point or a five-point?
Whatever best helps you guys. I mean, I, I've moved away from five points in the past. They just, because the four and the five become a little ambiguous with the differences. But if, if you feel like it helps you hone in your, where you want to do it, I mean, I'm really indifferent, so.
Okay, can we change our vote then?
Yeah, I would say, let's, I mean, and allow Tyler a chance to weigh in. So let's, yeah, not settle that. Maybe have that for further consideration, but I think good discussion.
Okay. So to close out this discussion, I will summarize the notes that I took from each individual. I'll share that with Counselor Holmes and then we'll do the consolidation. And this will best position us for the eighteenth. We'll do a readout of that session of what we just did now. And then kick off into the, make sure we get agreement. And then if, once we get agreement on the categories, then we'll, sorry, the functions, then we'll move into the discussion about the questions that would go into each of those categories.
Question I have is like, when, let's say, intergovernmental relations. If we're going to sit down and at a, at the review and I, how does he develop good working relations? How do I know that? Well, we find that by our quarterly meetings. We'll talk about things that are on the review and kind of go over those. And he can let us know when things are happening and we can discuss where we've seen him do those things. And so we can keep notes so that when we get to that annual, we'll have all that information gathered throughout the year.
Absolutely.
And he'll know what we're looking for. So when he sees him meeting something, he'll be able to let us know.
Yes, it'll be a two-way dialogue. So going back to sort of that communication cadence that we had talked about. You have the first step, the first tier is really each of us establishing some type of regular meeting cadence with the city manager. So we can have our own standing meetings and interactions and assess and understand what's happening in the areas that are most important for us. And then we've agreed that we would do a quarterly, which would be a, a two-way conversation, which Ben would share things that he's doing and wins successes, maybe share some areas of where he needs some additional assistance. And then we would do the same as well. And then in preparation for, so yes, we need to document and like keep our own notes so we don't forget. And then when we move to the annual, this is where we're looking at three sixty feedback. And then that would help support the information that we're receiving so that we can then provide a fair assessment. Yes.
And will we discuss getting information from staff at a next meeting or later meeting?
So, yeah, so we're, we're not quite there yet. So first, we really need to land the assessment template and the criteria. And then we, we have some ideas on how to go about the, the three sixty. So that will be sort of the next step in this project.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else, Counselor Holmes? Good? Great, thank you for your time. Moving on to the calendar. We're on August fourth. Movies in the park every Friday night. Farmers market every Saturday, nine to two P M. And I do notice the Watts House Museum is open at the same time, eleven to one usually on Saturdays. Come walk through the museum. Council work session, August eighteenth, work session at six P M, followed by city council at seven P M. E D C meeting at noon on August twenty-first, planning commission on August twenty-eighth at seven P M. City manager Ben Bergner?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Backes. I'll keep them short today. Just two quick updates. Luma Vista, did take that back to the county. Talked with commissioner as well as their public work staff. Was able to put the ball back in their court to where they need to determine the gate. And as well as with the final contract, I had talked with them that they have our preliminaries, but they're the ones kind of enforcing what the requirements are. They should use their attorney time to kind of sort that out first, as opposed to having to go back and forth to make the, to kind of go and agree with what we talked about. And then after that, so we can bring it back for anything that might still need any approval from the council. But going in a positive direction, I think that will produce a little bit more clarity from those who have the authority to make some of those decisions. Second thing I did send on an email today, we got it last Friday from Paul Vogel. Z T, it was unfortunate news about Project Spies. It did end up being determined that they will be staying in France. They won't be choosing any of the locations at this time. So that was unfortunate to hear, but I want to keep you guys updated with what's going on there. And beyond that, I will just appreciate staff and the council for everything you guys do. And the staff has been working through a lot of high, passionate situations that they've been holding up very well and having to deal with. So I appreciate all they do and, and the way that they are able to, in good faith and with positivity, help our residents and all those who come here, so.
Have you got any further on the well?
Oh, the basalt?
They are in process of pushing down new casing. So we don't know, they haven't gotten past the basalt yet. They're trying to get the proper casing and drill so they can get past the rock layer. So there, what I was, was told today, yeah, they're going to work on getting the casing down this week. Then they have a week break and then they'll be pushing the drill down and the week after that.
So how, how deep are they at this point?
Oh, they hit the basalt layer at eight hundred and thirteen feet.
Eight thirteen for the basalt?
Right. So now they're just having to put new casing, because they had, they did have casing in, but ended up being too small for the drill. So they had to go back and put some new casing in, install them a little bit.
Thank you. Chief Flewellen?
Yes, good evening, mayor and counselors. First, once again, congratulations and really happy to have Officer Davis on board. And also thank you, mayor and counselors, for your support over the past couple of years. About a year and a half ago, we're talking about this being a police department. And it's really exciting to be in this stage right now where we're having great officers and move towards that twenty-four-hour coverage hopefully in, in late twenty, two thousand and twenty-six and early twenty twenty-seven. And also thank you, Ben, for having a good work culture here and, and things like that. Make me want to join our team. Just a couple of community events we're doing, movies by Moonlight, flipping burgers and hot dogs. I have a new, found respect for fast food workers and the demand that people may put on you.
Inspection?
Yes. Doing that, yes, we had the way you came out there. So we're taking care of that. Got my food handler's cart, so we're good to go there. Tomorrow, we'll be participating with the Columbia County National Night Out tomorrow, so we'll be doing that too as well, enjoy with that too. And we tend to the traffic and safety committee for Columbia County that's upcoming Wednesday, so I'm from there. But besides that, also, Counselor Haugen, thank you very much for the recommendation for Radar Trellers. That's been, I think, pretty effective out there. So we talked about, about a month or two ago, so we got her out there and she's doing a pretty good job, so. That's all I have.
Community Development Director Lori Oliver Joseph?
I don't have any comments. Just thank you all for, for your work with the city. I appreciate you all. And yeah, I think we're all ready for bed.
Thank you. Counselor Haugen?
Oh, well, first, I'm tickled that Chris was able to recruit another veteran to the force. That's awesome, that's awesome. Cool to see that. Quick note on the, on the recruitment of a student, a junior, senior at the high school. I would like to approach the school board at the next meeting, next Monday, to see if they're game to have us recruit a, a student representative. There wouldn't, there'd be no cost to the city. It dovetails to what, what they're doing in the school board. They have a student representative on the school board. The only cost to the city would be a nameplate and they, you know, and they, they attend the meeting. And that's, it, it's a good segue into developing a youth council. So, so if, this would be the first step and then next year, hopefully, we can develop a youth council. But I need, I need the consent to make that approach to the school board. And then we can either adapt one of our volunteer forms or use the school board's form for the, their representative. But I'll, I can take care of that. But I just need the consent to approach the school board on that.
You need that right now?
Yeah.
I consent.
I'm good. Jim?
Sorry, I don't know why it's not being responsive to get off mute. No, I, I love the idea of getting a, a youth involved and potentially a youth council. For selecting the youth, how would the representative, would that be kind of an open process that people could express interest?
Well, first, we have to get permission from the school board to do it. And then we would approach the high school principal with whatever form the, the, the school board recommends. that either the, the school board recommends, or we come up from our volunteer forums. And that would open up to juniors and seniors at the high school for a one-year term. And I suppose we could decide if they wanted to extend the person, if it was a junior for a second term or not. But the first step is to get the school board on board and then, and then go, go from there. So that'll come back to the next meeting, because I have, I'll attend the school board meeting next Monday. Okay, so your thumbs up on you, for you?
Yep, supportive.
Okay, Jeanette?
Yeah, I, I, I agree. Also, just wanted to know that the LOC conference on October 2nd and October through October 4th, they're having a, on Friday, it's only Friday for students, ninth grade to 12th grade students. So it'd be a great opportunity for any of the, our high school students. When you do approach the school, that if they're interested, and whoever's interested, they should attend the LOC conference.
Right, right, actually. Yeah, if we, if we are able to select a, a school representative by before the conference, I would like to have them registered for the conference.
Yes, it'd be a great opportunity for them, yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm for you. Talk to the school board, and then be nice to then determine how we just select and what we're looking for.
Counselor Haugen, are you thinking of just like a whole new recruitment? Or would it be more like one of the student body members? That kind of has one of their tasks?
Open recruitment. So, so, and, and we may not get anybody interested, but you know, so those are all unknowns. But, but you know, we, first, we have to get the approval of the school board. And then we take it sequentially. So if, if we're stopped next Monday with, well, we're not interested in helping, you know, that was a different matter. But if, if they say yes, then, then we'll get to work on what kind of form. And I'll, and I'll get with you on what we, what we might use, and I'll talk with, with Tim at the school district to see what they were like and the high school principal.
Right, I was, I was just going to say, in the past, having a, a member of the school student body, that helps them pick their own person, whether it's just one of the tasks of, something they already have or a separate position, might be something going forward they could do.
Well, I, I, I think we want to have an application process. So we make it formal and official, just like the school board does.
Okay, Counselor Jacobs?
I have no comments for tonight. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you. Counselor Holmes?
Yep, nothing for me tonight.
You, Counselor Santiago?
I just want to keep it short. I, Ben and I attended Tillamook, the regional meeting, which was great. Patty, the executive director for the LOC, did a wonderful presentation on Revenue Reform Project. A lot of the cities are having issues with their finances, and it was just a great conversation. I won't, I'll kind of keep it there, but the, you know, she did provide a PowerPoint presentation. And she, you know, if, if they send it, I'm more than happy to forward that over. There's going to be an August 29th virtual meeting for essentials training. I know we have done, some of us have done that essential training, but they really are going to focus on venue and lobbying. So just if you guys are interested, it's on your LOC newsletter, I believe. And thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and that's municipal fundamentals, is what they call that one.
Chris, NJ, anything good? Didn't you man?
Congratulations, NJ.
Just a reminder again, movies in the park every Friday night. And thank you, Police Department, for flipping burgers and hot dogs. And we do have an open council position, so if you're interested, get it in. We'll, we'll hopefully have the interviews maybe first meeting in September. And with that, meeting adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.